I'm ready to start, thank you. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 3rd, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. The notice has also been posted at the Board of Education office, and a copy has been sent to the township clerk and the public library. I'm going to take a roll call from our existing board members at the moment. Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Swasan?
Here.
And Ms. Trheo?
Here.
We have a quorum. At this point, I'm going to ask everybody, please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, everybody. For those that know that I sit here as the chair, usually I try to get out of this chair pretty quickly. We get the board president in here, and I like to do these things under the radar. I got lucky today, I got a big crowd here, so thank you all for being here. It's usually really quiet, so I hit the jackpot tonight. But welcome, everybody. I'm going to read the announcements in terms of the school elections, and then we're going to swear in each of our board members individually. So elected to the board for three-year terms are the following: Mrs. Stats with 8,592 Mrs. Maroon with 5,379 votes. Mr. Pulsifer with 4,132 votes. And elected to the board for a one-year term is Ms. Eldridge Howard with 6,380 votes. Alright, so at this point, I'd like Ms. Eldridge Howard and family to please step up. I'd like to swear you in, and I will take a photo, and then bring up our other board members, please. I, please state your name.
I, Joyce Eldridge Howard.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, use either or.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Joyce Eldridge Howard.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And partially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Maroon, please kindly join me at the podium with your friends and family. I, please state your name.
I, Lisa Maroon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Lisa Maroon.
You can either solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I, Christopher Patrick Pulsifer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. I, please state your name.
I, Christopher Patrick Pulsifer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties of that office.
And justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you? How are you?
This is my husband, Brett.
Nice to meet you, how are you? Ready?
Yep.
You ready?
Yes.
I, please state your name.
I, Jane Stats.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth and allegiance.
And that I will bear truth and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name again.
I, Jane Stats.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Jena. Thank you. Okay, folks, the next part of our agenda is the election of our officer. In this case, it would be the board president. After the board president is elected, the board president will then move forward with the election of the vice president for the board. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the president of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. Do I have any nominations at this point?
I nominate Judy Haas for board president.
Okay. Ms. Trheo nominates Judy Haas as board president. Ms. Haas, do you accept that nomination?
I completely do.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations for board president? Okay. Now, at this point, I'd like to close the nomination for board president, and in order to do so, I'd like to do a roll call, I've been actually doing a roll call to close the nomination for board president. So may I have a motion?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Very good. All right, let me do a roll call. Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Haas. Now we can switch. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Very good. Take your time.
Congratulations. You were doing so well, I don't think I should interfere.
No, I'm good. I'm limited. My time is limited.
Okay. Right, well, moving right along then, I'd like to entertain nominations for vice president. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Dr. Swasan for vice president.
Thank you very much, Jean. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, we can proceed to close nominations and have a.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
We'll ask Ms. Swasan if she wants to take it.
Oh, I'm not giving her the choice. She is like everything to me. So, yes, do you want to do this? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so may we have a roll call?
Sure. Motion?
Oh.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Take a picture. A view of the room. No, no, you don't. Do a quick picture.
Anybody have a box for this? Thank you.
Stay right there, okay, we're going to do a full board, and then I think we're going to, we're ready to take.
I'll probably do that after.
You want to do after? Okay.
A large audience here tonight.
We'll get that out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving right along. I'd just like to say a few words. I'd just like to thank all my colleagues for once again electing me to this position, and for all the work that we all do all the time. Thanks to everybody who ran for the board last year for your demonstration of civic commitment. Thanks to my family and friends for their support, without which I couldn't do this, especially to my husband Lloyd, who's somewhere here, and my son, Dr. Lenny Haas. Still getting used to that. Proud graduate of Hillsborough Schools. We had a very good year last year. Among the highlights for me were the many wonderful performances and presentations by our schoolchildren and our staff here and at their schools. We had a special meeting early on on strategic planning after a year of study on input and proposals from the community. In June, we graduated 579 students, and at senior awards night, we awarded $192,000 worth of awards and scholarships. We've continued to receive recognition as a district in the sports, in the arts, and in our HSA's activities. Our community was recognized in the New York Times feature article this year for our housing options, the Soworlands and Duke Farms, and for our school system. We were the 22nd-best school district in New Jersey. We were the best place to teach, number one in Somerset County. And number 30 in the state, and the district with the best teachers, number two in Somerset County. I don't know who's number one. And we were the best district for athletes, 26th in the state and 171 in the country. So, very proud of all that. In the area of education, we implemented one of the strongest vaping policies in the state and sponsored many alcohol and drug prevention programs with the Municipal Alliance and the AGA. We purchased alcohol wands for use at dances and games to ensure everybody's safety. We expanded our AP offerings and concurrent enrollment classes. We expanded, due to popular demand, our American Sign Language classes. We revised the entire social studies curriculum. We created varsity letters for academic clubs. We increased our graduation rate and our average scores on the SATs. In the area of human resources, we recognized our excellent teachers and ESPs of the year. We're working with Rutgers University to improve labor management collaboration. We received reports of the community activities of our AGA members, sort of monthly, and commenced negotiations. We ratified our contract with our principals and supervisors and secured the services of our superintendent. And in September, we opened the new school year with 56 teaching positions filled from 1,942 applications. So people like to come here. In the area of operations, we prepared a comprehensive facilities assessment report, which gave us the scope of work that needs to be done in our 10 buildings and the prioritization of these projects to inform all of our next steps in this very important area. We conducted a thorough evaluation of our school's security internally and then by professionals. We passed a $129 million budget. We received $1 million from our state legislators, Roy Fryman, Andrew Zwecker, and Kip Bateman for HVAC issues. We discussed the state aid reduction of $5 million, and we prepared for a March 12th referendum. All of the time, we experienced the daily miracle of regular school administration, including processing hires and retires and payroll and purchasing and bill paying, and the miracle of teaching, counseling, nursing, and supporting every child. So with that said, I would like to move forward in the board president's report to talk about School Board Recognition Month. The governor presented to the State Board of Education a proclamation for School Board Recognition Month, which asks that this be read at all school board meetings. So I will just read this very quickly, I hope. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2019 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the Hillsborough Township Board of Education is one of more than 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts, and whereas the Hillsborough Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no remuneration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public schools. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as National Assessment of Educational Progress scores and the preparation for college through advanced placement offerings and SAT assessments, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2019 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs towards the advancement of our children's education. So, that's our proclamation. Thank you all once again for being part of this board. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to ethics training, which we do at our first meeting, and I would just like to ask everybody at the dais, you all have a package in front of you with ethics information. I'd like you to turn to page five of that. And I would like to share, I would like to share the reading of the Code of Ethics with all board members. So, I will start, and I guess I'll read two, and then we could go around and everybody can read. The Code of Ethics is about how we operate, and I think it's very important at our first meeting every year to recommit ourselves to it. Item number one, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulation of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the schools. Desire changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Laray?
I will confine, I, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
Thank you. Jean?
I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
Okay, Chris?
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its hold.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
Okay, you want to do the second, the last one? Wrap it up?
I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer. Will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Okay, very good. We're going to have our attorney provide ethics training to us, so I would turn this over to Vic.
Okay, thank you very much. So, if we look at the School Ethics Act, it was enacted in 1991, if we go to the next slide there, and the purpose of it was to ensure that the school officials who are elected by the voters hold the respect and confidence of the people. And the concept of it is to set forth certain prohibitions and also the Code of Ethics of school board members, which you just read. The goal is to ensure that school officials are aware that they need to refrain from any conduct which would be in violation of the public trust, or which would create a justifiable impression that the public trust is being violated. So, when we go through the Prohibited Acts section and the Code of Ethics for school board members, they all tie into that central theme, which is to ensure that the public believes that, as board members, they've elected you, and their interests and the interests of the schoolchildren are paramount, as opposed to personal interests of individual board members. And that's really what the School Ethics Act is all about, if I can boil it down into one thing there. The School Ethics Act is essentially governed by, or interpreted by, the School Ethics Commission. That is a body that is part of the Department of Education. They can issue advisory opinions, which we'll talk about a little bit later. They can receive complaints. If someone makes a complaint about a board member, believes that the board member has acted in a manner that is inconsistent with the School Ethics Act, they hear those complaints. If necessary, the disclosure statements that you all fill out, they retain those. And if there is a complaint, they might conduct the investigation, they'll hold a hearing, and if necessary, they'll administer a penalty. That could be a reprimand, or a censure, or suspension from the board, which happens in some cases, or even removal from the board, which is pretty rare, but it can happen. Advisory opinions can be requested from the School Ethics Commission. Those would be in cases where there's either not an outstanding decision that's been issued by the School Ethics Commission, or no advisory opinions that really touch on an issue that's not clear as to whether or not it's covered by the School Ethics Act. And so we'll touch on a couple of those later, but if there is a school official, and school officials includes not only board members, but also members of the administration, the superintendent, and the business administrator, anyone who has a hand in purchasing, so individuals can certainly request an advisory opinion if they want. We would typically assist with that as needed, and the School Ethics Commission sometimes releases those. So, for example, last year, I think they had 25 or 30, and they released five publicly, two of which I think are particularly important, and we'll discuss a little bit later. But that's the general overview of the School Ethics Act. So if you look at the next slide, then it'll talk about what the School Ethics Act prohibits. And so, without necessarily reading every single one of these word for word, I'll summarize the first one, which is 24A. It's, it would be inappropriate and it would be a violation of the School Ethics Act if you had an interest in a business organization, or engaged in any type of business, or professional activity, that would be in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of your duties as a board member. So what does that mean? What does that look like? You could have a scenario in which, and there are advisory opinions that deal with this, where you have an individual who's employed as a police officer. That a police officer in town might be assigned to be your school resource officer. They've found that serving as a school resource officer, where you have a daily interaction with staff and students, even if you're employed by the town, would be inconsistent with being a school board member. So that type of a scenario would exist. Way back when, when the voters voted on the budget, a similar situation would be if you were the township administrator, and then served at the same time on the school board. That was prohibited. That would be inconsistent, because if you were the township administrator and the budget was voted down, then back in those days, the town would look and determine whether or not to reduce the budget or what have you, so those would really be in conflict. 24B and 24C largely talk about similar issues, but 24B talks about using an official position to secure an unwarranted privilege, advantage, or employment for the board member, members of the board member's family, or others. So, what we're talking about there is a scenario in which, you know, whether it's self-dealing or whether it's doing favors for others, trying to get others. with staff and students, even if you're employed by the town, would be inconsistent with being a school board member. So, that type of a scenario would exist. Way back when, when the voters voted on the budget, a similar situation would be if you were the township administrator, and then served at the same time on the school board. That was prohibited. That would be inconsistent, because if you were the township administrator and the budget was voted down, then back in those days, the town would look and determine whether or not to reduce the budget or what have you. So, those would really be in conflict. 24B and 24C largely talk about similar issues, but 24B talks about using an official position to secure an unwarranted privilege, advantage, or employment for the board member, members of the board member's family, or others. So, what we're talking about there is a scenario in which, you know, whether it's self-dealing or whether it's doing favors for others, trying to get others employment, or other types of privileges or advantages. The key there, though, is unwarranted. So, there may be scenarios in which, you know, for example, if a board member is elected, they have a spouse who's already employed in the district or what have you. If that board member were trying to get unwarranted privileges or other issues for that spouse, that'd be a problem. But that doesn't mean that that spouse can't necessarily continue to be employed, advance in the district, so forth and so on. 24C talks about, essentially, if there's some type of, it's really two-pronged. The first one talks about whether there's a financial interest, whether it's direct or indirect financial interest or involvement. In some capacity, it could be in an business organization, what have you, that would reasonably be expected to impair the board member's objectivity or independence of judgment. So, what does that look like? If you had, for example, before you got elected to the board, you had a contract with the board for something, sign-making is one example that was used, or some other type of contract with the board. In that scenario, to maintain that contract with the board, I think the board member, or the board members, the public would believe that, or might believe, that you as a board member have your own self-interests at heart more than the interests of the school district. And those would be, you know, somewhat in conflict there. So, that, so voting on anything like that would be problematic. The second piece is similar, but it doesn't deal with a financial involvement. That deals with scenarios in which there is a personal involvement with a, either the board member or a member of your immediate family that creates some benefit to you or the immediate family member. So, there could be a scenario in which your personal involvement is such that if you were to vote on an action that would create a benefit either to you or your family member. So, that could be a scenario in which there's an issue with, it could be an appeal of a grading decision for your child, or something like that. There could be any number of scenarios in which there's that personal involvement. So, that's one thing that the board members are prohibited from acting upon in their official capacity. So, if we look at the next slide then, D, very similar, I think, to A. Board members are prohibited from undertaking any kind of employment or service, regardless of whether it's compensated or not, that might reasonably be expected to prejudice the board member's independence of judgment as they exercise, or as he or she exercises his or her official duties. So, examples of that that have come up in the past would be if a, if a board member had a consulting business, where they consulted with high school students, gave counseling to those students in terms of college applications and things like that. There could be potentially a scenario in which the members of the public might think, well, is this individual getting elected to the board? Or now that they're elected to the board, are they using their board status in order to get additional clients, if you will? Or are they using information that they have as a board member that would, that could potentially influence, you know, could it influence potentially curriculum or things of that nature that might better help their clients? So, in scenarios like that, that could potentially be an issue. 24E, 24E, I can summarize in a few words. Don't take bribes, that's the easiest way to do it. Basically, you're prohibited from soliciting or accepting any, anything of value, right? So, any gift, any favor, any loan, it could be a political contribution, any kind of a service or promise of future employment, anything of significance, with the understanding that you are accepting that, and the person who's giving it to you is trying to influence you directly or indirectly in the discharge of your official duties, right? So, that would be something that would be prohibited, it would undermine the public trust. It doesn't apply, as it's indicated here, to the solicitation or acceptance of contributions to the campaign, as long as you have, as a board member, no knowledge or reason to believe that the contribution was given to influence you in the discharge of your official duties. So, if someone were to give you some type of gift or political contribution, said, "I'm giving you this because I know that you're going to vote this way on X issue," that would be a problem. But incidental types of gifts, things that are of very little value, things that have nothing to do, they're not being offered in connection with a promise on behalf of the board member to act in a certain way, those are fine, but if there is something that is being done to influence you specifically, that would be problematic. Going to the next slide, the last two that we have here, or not the last two, but the last two that are prohibited. F talks about not using or allowing to be used any information that's not generally available to the public, that you as a board member receive in the course of your official business, to get financial gain for the, either for you or for immediate family member, or any business organization in which you're associated. So, basically, no self-dealing, as we would say. You know, you should not use information that you gain that is confidential, and then tell a family member or someone else, "Oh, you should do this because I know what the board is going to do in two months, and you can make a lot of money," so forth and so on. That would be prohibited. And then finally, 24G talks about representing a party or a person other than the school board or district in connection with any cause, matter, or proceeding, so forth or so on. So, if there was a matter involving litigation with the school district, your obligation is to essentially be aligned with the school district, as opposed to representing someone else that is suing the school district. It seems pretty self-explanatory. Turning to the next slide, now we're talking about what does the School Ethics Act permit, and there are a couple of issues where they specifically go forth. Instead of saying all the things that they prohibit, they say, "Well, these things are okay." So, 24H talks about participating in any matter that's required to be voted on. If there's not going to be any material or monetary gain that you're going to obtain as a member of any business or profession or occupation, any greater, to any greater extent than could be reasonably expected to any other member of that business. So, for example, if I work for Verizon, and I'm a board member, and the board is voting on a contract with Verizon, and I have no benefit from that whatsoever. I'm not someone who's a sales rep who's getting a commission, I'm not someone who's a shareholder in any fashion, or something like that, that is not going to be prohibited. What would be prohibited is if you were a shareholder in an organization, and you were voting on a contract that was going to ultimately really benefit you in a financial way. That's prohibited, but if it doesn't affect you in any way, then that's fine. 24I talks about, no prohibition about making an inquiry on behalf of a constituent so long as, basically, there's no promise. There's no gift, or fee, or reward, or anything that's given for that. So, inquiring with the superintendent, and inquiring with the board, trying to determine whether or not maybe a certain policy should be passed, or certain actions should be taken. If a constituent asks you to make that inquiry, that's fine, so long as it's not conditional, essentially. And then finally, representing either yourself or an immediate family member in negotiations or proceedings concerning your own or your own immediate family member's interests. What they basically are referring to there is in scenarios in which you might have an interest, or your family member might have an interest, that is somewhat adverse to the board or to the school district, but one on which you're permitted to do that. So, for example, if you had a child who was classified as eligible for special education-related services, and there was a disagreement, you have a right to file a request for due process and have that adjudicated. That, you do not give up if you are a board member, so you could still do that. Does it make for a slightly awkward situation? Sure, but you don't give up that right. So, so that's, those are the examples of the prohibitions and the permissions that are set forth in the Prohibited Acts section. So, if we turn to the next, I think it's the second, the next slide, so the Code of Ethics for school board members. We've read through those already, so I'm just going to kind of highlight some issues there. So, the first one, that's the lawyer's favorite, which says that you're going to abide by all laws, rules, and regulations, and you're going to do everything lawfully. We like that as lawyers, that's the way we like to operate, at least most lawyers do. So, certainly, that's the one that we prefer. If you're going to have changes, you bring them about through legal and ethical procedures, not through some underhanded way, or some inappropriate way. B talks about making decisions in the, basically, in the best interests of the students and in a non-discriminatory way. Again, pretty self-explanatory, but that's one of the things that you agree to do and uphold as a board member. C, I think, is probably the one for new board members, or for members of the public who maybe aren't so familiar with how boards of education operate, is probably the biggest one, where it specifically says that I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame those policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. So, this, kind of in conjunction with D, I think, is very important, which says, "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run." So, that essentially is clarifying the role of board members, right? Oftentimes, there might be a mistake, or a misnomer, misunderstanding in the community about what board members do and what they don't do, right? So, oftentimes, board members, committee members might think, "Well, why don't you go hire this person?" Or, "Why can't you just make this determination to do this?" Well, the board members do not run the schools, they do not administer on day-to-day. That is something that you have a superintendent for, you have a business administrator, so forth and so on, various staff. If you were to analogize it, imagine as if this is a corporation, which it basically is. Your superintendent is essentially the CEO, your business administrator is essentially the CFO, and you, as board members, fill the role of the board of directors, right? So, the day-to-day operations are being handled by your administrators, but your job as board members is to see that the school district is well-run. So, there may be policies that you wish to implement, and that, as a board, you'll decide upon, and then, once you decide upon what those policies are, your strategic plan, that's something that is then going to be implemented by your administration and your staff. So, that, that's where, certainly, I don't see it a lot, but what I have seen in other school districts, and through advisory opinions, or through decisions where there are complaints filed against school board members, that's the one that sometimes, where some school board members can blur the line, and they get into what you might call micromanaging, or essentially getting involved in the day-to-day operations, when that's not the role of a board member. So, so those are two items in the Code of Ethics of school board members that are particularly important in terms of clarifying the board's role. And again, talking about hiring, yes, the board does vote on who they hire, but the process is, in terms of the statute, is that the superintendent will make recommendations as to who to hire. That's the superintendent's role, that's specifically set forth by New Jersey state statute. And as a board member, you have the ability to vote yes or to vote no, but the board members are not making determinations saying, "I think you should hire this person," and putting that person's name in the ring. It's the responsibility of the superintendent to make those determinations. E talks about recognizing that authority rests with the board of ed, and making no personal promises or taking any private action that might compromise the board. Where we see this come up most frequently is in potentially letters to the editor, for example. There's a whole, I don't want to say a body of case law, but there's a whole number of advisory opinions and confidential decisions that indicate, if a board member wants to write a letter to the editor, there are things to do to make sure they're not compromising the board. You have to identify yourself as a board member, but indicate that this is not the board's official opinion, you're speaking as an individual. And there are a few other factors there, but essentially, making sure that you're not putting the board in a position where it could potentially be liable for your statements or things of that nature. F talks about refusing to surrender your independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use it for personal gain, very self-explanatory. School board elections are nonpartisan, which is very nice, and they are to remain that way, and this is not a partisan board, to be sure. G is important, holding confidential all matters which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals in the schools. That is something that will come up fairly frequently in executive session, because information can't be discussed in public. There is any number of confidential discussions, they might involve students, they might involve staff members, all of whom have privacy interests, so it's very important that board members remember to keep that information confidential. It's not quite, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, but it's very similar in that regard. What happens in executive session stays there until the need for confidential ally no longer exists. So, that's one to make sure that we keep in mind as well. H, in terms of appointing personnel, you'll vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the chief administrative officer's recommendation. Supporting and protecting school personnel and the proper performance of their duties, that's certainly important, and it's a requirement for board members. And then finally, and this is one that can happen especially for new board members, but also members of the public, all complaints have to be referred to the superintendent or the chief administrative officer. So, what many board members across the state will certainly indicate is that they might be at a soccer game, or a baseball game, or a, or in the supermarket, or wherever you may be, and individuals may ask you, "I need you to address this," or, "Can you make sure this happens?" so forth and so on, and they have a complaint about the schools. It's important for you to know those, but technically speaking, the complaints should go through the proper procedures, which is to get resolved at the lowest possible level. If it's a complaint about a teacher, it should be resolved the teacher and/or principal, or supervisor, or perhaps then it gets up to the superintendent, but there's a chain of command essentially that it should follow. And so, whenever a complaint comes to you, that's fine, but you should refer it to the superintendent. And the superintendent will either act upon it, or it may be at a lower level that needs to be delegated to the principal or a supervisor, as the case may be. So, so that's one of those situations where the board members aren't administering the schools or running the schools, but they're going to ensure that they're well-run. When there's a complaint, we refer to administration. So, if we, the next section that we talk about here is avoiding common potential pitfalls. So, to a degree, I've kind of already talked about some of these, but just to remember, again, the last one we just talked about, refer all complaints to the superintendent. Remember also that you're, as a role, as a board member, your role is confined to policymaking and planning. It's the role of this board to make a determination as to what the board's policy should be, how the school district should operate as a whole, not getting involved in the day-to-day operations, but how the school district should operate. And so, in those scenarios, that's the board member's role. It could violate 24.1C if there was a scenario in which your role extended beyond that. Avoid giving orders to staff members, yes, that is important to know, because that could arise, whether it's through volunteering in the district, or in other scenarios, you might be walking through the schools for whatever reason. That would potentially violate 24.1D, because that would really be seen as running the schools, as opposed to ensuring that the schools are well-run. So, in that scenario, leave the direction of staff to the administrators. Turning to the next slide, so we recommend refrain from referring friends to the superintendent for employment. Is that per se prohibited, when you think that there may be someone who is a qualified candidate who is good for the job? No, it is not prohibited per se. However, you don't want the public to think that you are using the schools for either your personal gain or for the gain of your friends. There's a process. There's a, there's an advertisement for openings, the best qualified candidate will almost always rise to the top through the interview process, and the superintendent is tasked with making recommendations as to who he believes will be the best candidate. So, you may have someone who's interested, someone may express an interest, and the proper response there is to say, put in an application, put it in, whether it's through AppleTrack or whatever scenario system is used, and it should really be left at that. If you have issues with any board policies, or with the curriculum, or with any board procedures, that should be referred to the superintendent for action. That may then come up to a committee, or whatever the case may be, but generally speaking, if there are issues that are arising in the school, those should be dealt with by the superintendent or by other administrators. And then, if necessary, if it's a, if it's a large issue in terms of, it's not an individual issue, maybe at one school, or one teacher, or one administrator, whatever the case may be, but if it's a bigger issue, that's then the responsibility of the superintendent to gather the information for you, make recommendations that might be appropriate, whether it's changing policy, so forth and so on. That's really the role of the board. And then, once the information, the recommendations are made, then the board members would consider those, and then get involved in that policymaking and planning. If we turn to the next section here, then we talk about the School Ethics Act in action, mostly referring to various advisory opinions here, and really just dealing with two advisory opinions at this point, just to make it as brief as possible. So, advisory opinion A1518 came out last year. So, this was an advisory opinion that really deals with volunteering in the school district. And this was a board member who was very, very active in the community. First and foremost, the board member was an active supporter of the Local Education Association during contract negotiations prior to being a board member, and participated in various activities to demonstrate support for the association there. There was no formal endorsement when the board member ran, or when the candidate ran to be a board member, but that person was very involved. So, the question that came up, or that will come up, is whether or not that individual can be involved in negotiations, for example. In addition to that, the board member, as I said previously, was a volunteer in the district in many varied capacities. The PTA president, was a homeroom- The PTA president, was a homeroom parent, coordinated all other homeroom parents, coordinated a family movie night in the district, coordinated a field day. So this is a board member who had either a lot of time on their hands or who was just very, very dedicated and wanted to do a lot of things for the community, which is laudable. But someone who certainly was very, very busy and involved in the schools quite a bit. So the question that came up was, is this going to create a problem for the board member as a board member? Are they going to be in a position where they might not be able to act on certain items? Or are they even permitted to volunteer in the district? So, when we turn to the next slide, we see in terms of the opinion, so the School Ethics Commission reviewed it, and they wanted to make very clear because there had been other decisions in the past limiting the ability of board members to volunteer in certain capacities. So for example, being a volunteer coach, that would be prohibited. Or a volunteer athletic trainer, that would be prohibited. It's too much interaction with staff or students on a daily basis. You have obviously evaluation and supervision issues, right? So if you are a board member and you're volunteering as a coach, someone who is evaluating you would be either the principal or the athletic director. That person's evaluated by the superintendent. And technically, in a way, you are their boss, but then they're your boss as well. That wouldn't work. So, so that would be problematic. But here, what they found was, and they wanted to make clear, volunteering in and of itself is not prohibited. It depends upon the degree of involvement and the degree of interaction that exists between staff and students. And to what degree, when you're volunteering as a board member, you have either actual authority or you appear to have authority to give and receive or direct and order staff during those activities. So, that's the critical piece there. So with regard to being a PTA president, for example, they describe that as more passive, right? As a PTA president, you're not engaged in direct, you're receiving or giving direction to staff or receiving direction from staff, students or other board members. There is a connection with the school, but it's somewhat attenuated. So in that scenario, no issue there. With regard to being a classroom parent or directing certain activities, those are not on a daily basis. They're few and far between. That was acceptable and that was fine. So volunteering, so once you become a board member, you don't give up all rights to volunteer your time in addition to volunteering as a board member. You don't give up your time to volunteer in other ways as well. So they wanted to clarify that, especially in light of this particular situation. And so because a school board member from a school district made this request, they thought it was important enough to make it a public advisory opinion, and that's what we have there. So, and then finally, with regard to the issue pertaining to negotiations, there was no conflict with negotiations there. That person was not endorsed by the union. There was not any kind of excessive entanglement, if you will, that would preclude negotiations. Now, when board members do volunteer in the district, the School Ethics Commission said, "You know what? You should really make sure that," this is on the next slide, I think, yeah. "You should make sure that the superintendent and relevant staff members know that you're there as a volunteer, either as a volunteer or as a parent or both, but you're not there as a board member, right? So if you're going to that, whatever the case may be, if you happen to chaperone an event, or if you are otherwise volunteering in some other capacity as a class parent, you just need to make sure that the relevant staff knows so they don't think that you're there as a board member in your official capacity." That eliminates all confusion, and it kind of limits hopefully those interactions and, you know, who's going to be ordering whom around or so forth and so on. So the takeaway there, you can serve in high-level PTA positions. You can volunteer in district activities, not prohibited. And when it comes to negotiating with the teachers' union, legitimate political activity such as advocating for teachers prior to the election without more, so in other words, without getting campaign contributions, without being formally endorsed, is going to be fine. You could serve on the district's negotiations committee. It doesn't violate the Act. And finally, the last advisory opinion that I'll talk about here, these last two slides. So this one talked about having a relative or relative of sorts that is employed in the school district and whether you can participate in negotiations, whether you can participate in the evaluation of the superintendent. Now, just to back up for a second from a big-picture perspective, there will be times when board members may be conflicted from participating in negotiations or evaluating the superintendent. When does that really occur? That typically occurs, most frequently, when a board member also happens to have a member of his or her immediate family working in the district, a spouse or a dependent child who still lives at home. In those scenarios, the board member is prohibited from participating in negotiations. We prohibited from, because the concept would be is that the, the public might perceive that you are acting in negotiations not in the school district's best interest, but in the best interest of your immediate family member. Because if you agree to certain types of salaries or benefits, whatever the case may be, they may think that you're doing that not in the district's best interest, but because it would mean more benefits or higher salary for your spouse or whomever. So that would be why you'd be prohibited from participating in negotiations. Also, participating in evaluation issues, the reason why they say that you couldn't participate in those is because if you did, that might lead the public to think that when you gave the, when you evaluated the superintendent, maybe you did so because it might be more beneficial to your spouse or to your child or to whomever the case may be. So in those scenarios, there would be a prohibition. Now, what then comes up, and this becomes a very entangled thing. We're not going to go through every scenario. But if you have immediate family members or relatives who are, who are employed by public school districts in neighboring districts and who are part of the New Jersey Education Association, the same kind of theory or the same kind of thought process exists since school districts often use comparability between one district and another. If you serve on the negotiations committee in this school district and you have a spouse who works in another school district and is in the union, is it a scenario in which the public might perceive you to be acting not in the school district's best interest, but in the interest of your spouse or whomever? So, there's a whole chart, if anyone is ever interested. Advisory Opinion A2417 kind of goes through the entire chart. We're not going to go through that at length today. But A718 was a scenario in which the board member's wife worked in the school district and was a member of the Local Education Association and the NJEA, and also had a cousin who worked in another school district, excuse me, who had a cousin who worked in the school district. So in that scenario, the board member wants to know, "Can I participate in negotiations here?" So, the School Ethics Commission said, there's various definitions of relatives. You have the, you have your nepotism policy, which has a very expansive definition of a relative and who and whom cannot be employed if you are a board member. Cousin is not in there, actually. So even though a cousin is certainly a relative, that's not one of the relatives they think is, is close enough to be prohibited. So, then the analysis falls under, well, would the board member be presumed as violating the School Ethics Act by securing unwarranted privileges for another, right? Because it's not only just your members of your immediate family, but any, anyone else, the others, as they say. So, ultimately, what the School Ethics Commission found is that a cousin is really no different from any other person. It depends on the level of entanglement. And there might be an issue with the words negotiations if they were in, for example, a different school district, if they had some type of leadership position in the association at other school district, if they were involved in negotiations, if they were involved in grievance processing or were the president of the union or things like that, then there could be potentially an issue. But if they are simply, simply a member of the association, that typically would not be enough to cause a conflict. So then, finally, the last slide there, we talk about the advisory opinion. They gave also some examples of what unwarranted privileges are. So, if the board member were to use that position to secure the wife's cousin employment, if they were not the most qualified candidate then and was not recommended by the superintendent, but you were pushing that person anyway, yeah, that would be an unwarranted privilege. Or if you were trying to convince the board not to take disciplinary action against the wife's cousin when discipline was otherwise justified. So in those scenarios, board members should be recusing themselves because otherwise it would be a conflict. Or scenarios in which the wife's cousin that was employed in the district, if you sought to get a stipend for that person, but no one else who had a similar title or job position got a stipend, that would be determined to be an unwarranted privilege or advantage. But voting on a contract that raises salaries for all staff, for example, that's not going to be a problem. So if you had, if your wife's cousin is employed in the district, you can vote on the contract for that person. So it's not a conflict that prevents participation in negotiations unless there's some type of unwarranted benefit that someone is trying to obtain. So, that's the condensed version of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for school board members. I know. There you go.
Are there any questions or comments from the board about the ethics presentation? Okay, we'll be discussing this, I guess, at other times during the year. I'd just like to proceed with committee, committee assignments and liaisons, and then we'll take a quick little break. For 2019, our education committee will be chaired by Lorraine Swanson, and board members will be Joyce Eldridge Howard and Ann Harris and myself. Human resources will be chaired by Chris Pulcifer with Jane Stats and Lisa Maroon and myself. Operations will be chaired by Greg Gillett, and board members will be Ann Harris and Jean Trujillo and myself. We have two ad hoc committees. Negotiations will continue to be chaired by Chris with Lorraine, Jean, and myself as other members. And communications will be chaired by Ann Harris with Lisa Maroon and Jane Stats and myself. And then we have a governance committee, which is a committee of all the chairs of all the other committees, the major committees of education, HR, and operations. For our liaisons, I will continue as the Somerset County Educational Services Commission liaison, even though for the, like, 10th time, it's not on the agenda. Okay? Okay, Jean Trujillo, Jean Trujillo will be our liaison to the County School Board Association and the New Jersey School Board Association. Our legislative representative will be Joyce Eldridge Howard. Garden State Coalition, which meets at 3:30 in East Brunswick. I'll take it because I can do it, but if anybody else wants to come along, they have some really good meetings coming up. In fact, the January meeting is going to have John Mooney, editor of the New Jersey Spotlight, and a really fantastic speaker. So if anybody wants to come, let's carpool because otherwise you'll never find it. For the Joint Council of HSAs, Lorraine will continue her work. And for the Municipal Alliance, Jane Stats will take that position. And for Township Liaison, myself and Lorraine will do that. And while I'm mentioning that, I'd like to recognize Doug Thompson, deputy mayor, who is the township committee's liaison to us. And nice to see you here in the audience today. I'd also like to recognize our former board member, Tom Kins, who's sitting in the corner there. Thank you, Tom. And I'd like to recognize our union leadership, Henry Goodhue, Linda Erwood, and hundreds Okay, and actually, I'd like to recognize Barbara Parker because she was the union president when I started here. Okay, just some very quick reminders for the board and for the public. There are links on our website for your input and budget, input on the budget as well as for the referendum. School will be in session on Monday, January 21st to replace the snow day that we had in mid-November. For those who are curious, our flags are at half-mast today in memory of former Assemblyman Albert Burstein, who served in the assembly from 1971 through 1982, was the majority leader and was actually involved in election reform and school funding equity issues. Today, board members should have received a request for information regarding your attendance at graduation. So if you intend to attend, please let our high school administration know about that as soon as possible. Couple of upcoming events. Tomorrow morning, if there's no snow, our superintendent will be holding a coffee with the superintendent at 9 o'clock. Also tomorrow for board members, at 3 o'clock, the School Board Association is doing a podcast on can I do that, should I do that, regarding board member community involvement. So it would be a good thing to listen to. On January 9th, Wednesday, the Hillsborough High School Winter Arts Festival begins. On Thursday, the high school choir has their winter concert from 7 to 9. On Friday, the Municipal Alliance meets. The following Monday at 6 o'clock, Somerset County School Board Association is having a meeting with best practices in communication, health benefits, and the role of Board of Ed members. Dinner comes with that at the Somerset County Votech School, served by their students. On Tuesday, Governor Murphy will be giving his State of the State address. On Wednesday, we have an orchestra festival, 7 to 8:30. On Thursday, the high school guidance office is doing junior parent college orientation. On Saturday, January 19th, Orton Road School is going to have their All-Stars playing against the Harlem Wizards basketball team for a great game and fundraiser. On January 23rd, there is a coral festival. On January 24th, the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee is meeting to discuss social and emotional learning strategies for parents. On January 25th, there's picto night for Hillsborough Elementary School, but it's held at the high school. On January 30th, Wednesday at 3:30, the Garden State Coalition of Schools meeting will take place with John Mooney. January 31st, Thursday, eighth-grade parent orientation. February 5th, Tuesday night, Steered Straight Program for students and parents, very powerful drug prevention program. On February 9th, a Saturday, there's a regional leadership program by the School Boards Association. And on February 26th, the governor's budget address, which will let us know if there are any surprises for us. And on March 8th, 9th, 10th, 15th, and 16th, our high school musical will be taking place. And on March 12th, the referendum. So, keep all of those things in mind. I'll send an email to the board members listing all that because none of you are taking notes. So, let's take a quick, like, two-minute break because we need to set up the next presentation and the podium. I'd like to tell the audience, there's a stack of chairs in the back. We didn't know you were all coming. We would have set up more if we did, but we can use that time if you want to come up and sit up front or around the sides. There are chairs back there. If we knew in advance, I mean, we don't, we don't get to reserve the high school on short notice either. So, you know, if you're tired of standing, I apologize, but there are seats back there for you. So, quick two-minute break? Okay?
Picture of the board member?
Sure.
Can they take your reserved seat?
Okay, we're going to reconvene our meeting. If everybody could take a seat. I'm glad to see a lot of people are now seated. I want you to be comfortable. Okay, we proceed with approval of our meeting schedule for next year. It's an attachment to the agenda. I hope all board members have had a chance to take a look at it. Are there any questions or comments about the meeting schedule? Well, first, I'll take a motion, sorry. Motion to approve the meeting schedule. Thank you. Chris, second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, questions, comments?
Oh, I was just looking at my question. I had sent this later in the day, so maybe it was, I'm just missed. But my question was, we usually follow the second and fourth Monday pattern. So I understand, like, for some of them, like, in March, I understand why it misses that pattern because we're trying to get a board meeting in before the referendum. But I wasn't sure about the 2019-20 school calendar. Their September 16th and 23rd are back-to-back dates, even though we could have done, like, the second Monday is a September 9th, I believe. So that was question one. And then also, December 23rd is the, I'm not sure which Monday it was, but it was, I guess it was a Monday right before the winter break holidays. I wasn't sure about that calendar.
Correct.
So, I just, clarification.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The September dates are as they are because we didn't want to have a meeting close to the first day of school. We wanted everybody to get settled in and the final weekend of And the final weekend of September is Rosh Hashanah.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, the Monday, the Monday night. So, that's the reason for September. And the calendar will be discussed by the Education Committee, hopefully at their January meeting, because we do need to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the meeting schedule? Okay, roll call, please.
Sure. Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Now we move to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the December 10th, 2018 Regular Public Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We recognize certain pieces of correspondence that we received, and we will now move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Do you see the December 17th minutes?
We have the approval of the December 17th.
December 17th minutes.
Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry. Motion to approve the December 17th Regular Public Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about that set of minutes? Okay. Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay.
Sure. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, once again, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to apologize in advance. I'm losing my voice from getting a cold over the vacation. Happy New Year, everybody. Happy New Year to the board. I'd like to congratulate our newest members of the board, Mrs. Haas, Mrs. Maroon, and Ms. Eldridge Howard. Also, congratulations to Chris Pulsifer on his reelection to the board, as well as to our officers, Judy Haas as President, and Dr. Swanson as Vice President. Because I'm losing my voice, I'm going to ask for some help from my colleagues. First, Dr. Antunes will share some great news from around the district.
Thank you. I think Ms. Haas talked about some of this stuff, but I'll go ahead and read it on behalf of Dr. Schiff. I'm pleased to share some good news and upcoming events from around the district with our board and community members in attendance this evening. It is my pleasure this evening to announce that Amsterdam 4th grade teacher, Mrs. Lisa Cottle, has been honored by the New Jersey Department of Education as the New Jersey Exemplary Elementary Educator of the Year. This state program looks to identify educators who exhibit exceptional educational talent, as evidenced by effective instructional practices and student learning results in the classroom and school, demonstrate exemplary educational accomplishments beyond the classroom that provide models of excellence for the teaching profession, make contributions to education that are largely unheralded yet worthy of spotlight, have an engaging, inspiring presence that motivates and impacts students, colleagues, and the community, and display a strong, long-range potential for professional and policy leadership. The goal of this statewide program is to identify outstanding educators for special recognition. Congratulations on this honor, Lisa. You're a remarkable educator and an inspiration to your students, colleagues, and the community. The Hillsborough High School Guidance Department will host a Parents of Juniors College Night on January 17th at 6:30 p.m. in the Hillsborough High School Auditorium. The night will give parents an overview of college planning, discussion on the how and when to get started, introduction to Naviance and the application process, testing information, as well as details on financial planning. This is a very informative night for parents of the class of 2020, and I encourage everyone to attend. The Autton Road Home and School Association will host its biannual Aris Wizards fundraiser game at 6:00 p.m. on January 19th at Hillsborough High School. That evening, Autton Road teachers will take on the Harlem Wizards. The night will be filled with tricks and laughs. All community members are welcome. This is a great family event, and tickets are available for purchase on the Autton Road Intermediate School website. I know that so much work goes into making this evening a success. Thank you to our Autton Road Home and School Association for their dedication to our students. This past weekend, the Soccer Coaches Association of New Jersey held its 50th Boys High School Awards banquet to honor well-deserving players, coaches, and teams from around the state on this past fall season. Congratulations to the Raiders Boys Soccer Team for being named number 13 in the state. Also honored at the banquet were Justin Dominique, Nick Byrd, John Gataletta, and Zurab Bedashvili, and Coach Eric Puma. Congratulations on a fantastic season. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Education Conference Room in the Hillsborough Municipal Building, Dr. Schiff will be hosting our second Coffee with the Superintendent of the school year. Tomorrow's discussion will focus on our upcoming referendum. Our conversations usually last about an hour, and all community members are invited to attend. If you are unable to attend tomorrow, two additional dates for future coffees are March 6th at 7:00 p.m. and May 7th at 9:00 a.m. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, we're going to, the board is going to be considering the question for the March 12th referendum. It's a very, very important vote. It's a vote that will help get us on a financial glide path that's healthy. It will also provide for full-day kindergarten for our youngest learners in our district. The vote is on March 12th, and with your permission, I'd like Mr. Mahmood to read the proposal, as well as the explanatory statement that the board will be considering tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. So, the question will read as follows. There shall be raised an additional $8,94,108 for general funds in the 2019-20 school year. These taxes will be used to provide funds to maintain levels of programs and class size. The taxes will also be used to implement the full-day kindergarten program, including the employment of additional personnel, the acquisition of supplies, and the payment of the initial setup and the lease of temporary classrooms. Approval of these taxes will result in a permanent increase in the district's tax levy. The additional taxes authorized herein will be used exclusively for the purposes described herein, and to finance expenditures that are in addition to those necessary to achieve the New Jersey student learning standards. The, so that would be the question. The explanation will be as follows. State funding for the Hillsborough Township Public Schools is expected to decrease by $5,346,508 over six years. The reduction in state funding, coupled with the rising costs outside of the board's control, will have a negative impact on instructional programs. Passing the referendum will allow the district to maintain current programs and class size. In addition, the district would implement a full-day kindergarten program. Teachers, supplies, and the initial setup and lease of temporary classrooms will be funded, so that full-day kindergarten will begin in the fall of 2019. Approximately 90% of districts in New Jersey offer full-day kindergarten. Meeting the state standards for kindergarten is much more challenging in a half-day versus a full-day program. The state aid formula calculates funding full-day kindergarten programs at twice the amount as half-day kindergarten programs. If not passed, the school district would need to consider reducing teachers and staff, increasing class sizes, increasing fees for students to participate in athletics and co-curricular activities, increasing fees for technology, and eliminating programs that the board could no longer afford. God bless you. These negative programmatic impacts will continue in future years, as state funding is scheduled to be decreased by $5,346,508 over six years.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. I just want to emphasize a couple of things from the explanatory statement. First, the reason that we are in the position that we're in today is twofold. First of all, it's a result of the state aid reductions, the 5.3 million that was referenced in the explanatory statement. It was actually 5.6 million. We already received a reduction in this year's budget of close to $300,000. Those reductions will be phased in over a period of now six years. That's one of the reasons. The second reason is the cap. We have a 2% property tax cap levy in our, in the state of New Jersey right now. We have costs that are beyond the board's control that are increasing beyond that 2%. Now, we could cut staff along the way. We've decided not to do that. We've decided to deplete surpluses in order to try to maintain our staff for as long as we can. We're at the point now where we need to go out to the community and ask for this levy increase, in order to maintain what we currently have, as well as do full-day K. Full-day K is coupled with this referendum, because of the way that the state aid is calculated based upon full-day K. Right now, because we have half-day kindergarten, we receive half the per-pupil expenditure in state aid. A full-day kindergarten program is a full student count. So, we actually receive a little bit more than twice the amount that we would have received, that we would receive if we had full-day kindergarten. So those two things are very important to package together. We're going to continue to communicate, assuming that the board approves this question tonight. I think it's the second-to-last question on the agenda this evening. We'll communicate through school messenger, through the local news. I'm meeting with lots of different community groups, as well as all of the faculty and staff, many of whom are here tonight, as well as the HSAs throughout the community. And if you would like me, anyone who is watching this, to ask questions or to ask me to come and speak with a group, I'd be more than happy to. Please don't hesitate to contact me at the school office, 431-6600, extension 2002. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We're up to comments from the board and the public. I'll just read our statement. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that's listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there is another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a 3-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but are rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So with that, I'll take public comment or board comment.
May I just ask one clarification question on the wording?
Sure.
On the first page with the proposal, where it says the additional taxes authorized herein will be used exclusively for the purposes described, is that for in perpetuity, or is that for year one? Because I think there was a previous discussion how this board could not bind future boards.
Okay. Quick.
So, for example, I specifically, it's on the bottom of Page 1 of the proposal.
Okay.
So, it says exclusively for purposes described herein. Does that mean that full-day kindergarten, if approved with this resolution, or sorry, this referendum on March 12th, would be, I guess, in perpetuity? Like, the future board could not take that $3 million and use it for something else? That's question 1. And the second question that I had is, in the explanation, where it says that full-day kindergarten would begin in the fall of 2019, does that actually mean the first day of school in 2019-20 school year? Or is that fall, as in, like, fall starts on September, whatever it is, and goes through beginning of December?
I think we've been pretty clear that we'll start with the beginning of school. I mean, it would be very hard to do otherwise, so, okay.
With regard to the other question, I know that Bond Counsel had drafted this resolution and a proposal, which I know has been approved, but my understanding is that when it talks about exclusively for the purposes described herein, that would certainly be for year 1. But any future determinations as to the implementation of the budget is determined by the next Board of Education that'd be doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the board, or can we go to the public, please? Okay, public comment. Elena.
Elena Misari, 466 Raider Boulevard. Proud member and officer of the Hillsborough Education Association. As I was unable to attend the final meeting in December, I would like to take this opportunity publicly to extend a thank you to the members of the Board of Ed who completed their terms in December. On behalf of the HEA, we appreciate your time and service to the district. Happy New Year to those of you that are still here. And I would also like to extend a warm welcome to the new appointees, Jane, Joyce, Lisa, and Chris, who join and rejoin the Board of Ed this evening. We look forward to working together to accomplish great things and solidify the excellence associated with Hillsborough Township Public Schools. This is a new year, and with that comes a new opportunity to make decisions that best support not only our students, but our staff. I am honored this evening to speak on behalf of the HEA. The Hillsborough Education Association is comprised of 1,084 dedicated individuals. 498 of them not only work here, but live here and vote here. Many of them are here this evening, and I would like to give them a round of applause acknowledging their talents, and to thank them for their hard work and dedication. Displayed in many places throughout the district is our mission statement. It reads, "The Hillsborough Township Public School District is committed to providing a superior education for all students, so they will lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. In my 17 years here, many roadblocks have arisen that could easily prevent this from happening. Yet we, the members of the Hillsborough Education Association, always make do. We always perform. We bring nothing but the best, day in and day out, year in and year out. We still achieve at an exceptional level that brings accolades and awards to the district. We are the heart of Hillsborough. We are approaching concerning times, though, and I want to ask, who is taking care of the people in charge of providing the superior education for all students? Effective July 1st, the Board of Ed entered into a new contract with an insurance carrier that has taken control of our health and well-being. The norm has been denial of coverage of necessary medicines, equipment, devices, and procedures, citing they are experimental in nature, when in reality they are life-altering. These denials affect not only us, but our spouses, and sadly, even our children. These denials have resulted in costly bills, as well as bills going to collection agencies, and an extra stress to what most likely is already a stressful situation. It's not okay that the health insurance we pay thousands of dollars for is destroying people's quality of life. It's just not okay."
Hi, I'm Kitty Ward, Hillsborough Education Association Secretary. I'd like to yield my time to Elena.
Sure. Thank you, Kitty. Many of our members are living paycheck to paycheck. It's no secret that the cost of living in New Jersey is obscene. Many of us have taken on extra jobs as tutors, coaches, extracurricular advisors, and yet that's still not enough. Our members have had to take on even more jobs, real estate, retail, childcare, and many other areas, just to make ends meet. When I started teaching 22 years ago, I knew I wasn't going into the profession for the income, but never did I ever expect that despite my hard work and dedication to my craft, I would have to worry about how I would pay my monthly bills. The members of the HEA continuously make sacrifices. Where else are such sacrifices being made? Whether it's visible to the community or not, the morale of teachers and support staff in Hillsborough and nationwide continues to decline. We live in an era that sadly devalues the profession. Teachers and support staff feel underappreciated and undersupervised. On average, educators make 60% less in comparison to similarly educated professionals. Recently, The Patch published an article of the 10,000 teachers in New Jersey who make close to or above $100,000. On paper, wow, that's impressive, but some pretty key information was missing there: years of service, number of degrees. The members of the HEA are always furthering their education and attending professional development workshops and conferences to keep themselves fresh and up to date with technology and methodology that will best serve our students. Sadly, all professional development requests not deemed necessary are now being denied due to budgetary constraints. Isn't all professional development necessary to continue to provide the superior education mentioned in our mission statement? As I mentioned earlier, the new year brings new opportunities. I hope that you will take into consideration all that I've spoken about as we move forward. We are strong. We are united. We are empowered. We are engaged. We are the HEA. Thank you for your time. (applause) Thank you for your time.
Henry?
Good evening. Henry Goodhue. It's a tough fact to follow. I'd like to thank my fellow officers, Lynn Lencius-Durwood, Elena Moser, Amy Salinger, and Kitty Ward, as well as all of the members and representatives and community members who have joined us here tonight. Their support means the world to us. Some of the things I will discuss pale in comparison to the healthcare issues that were raised by Elena, but I would like to reference one of the topics that she touched upon, which was professional development. And I realize that we are in very difficult budgetary times, but I do have to question the board's decision to freeze professional development, especially in light of two policies that we have passed. One being, ironically enough, professional development for teachers and school leaders, which states, "The Board of Education encourages all staff members to pursue a program of continuing professional development by coursework or matriculation in institutions of higher learning, participation in workshops and conferences, membership in professional organizations, and independent scholarship." That's policy 3240. The other one I'd like to reference is 3221, which is the evaluation of teachers, which states, "The Board of Education recognizes the importance of teacher effectiveness to further the development of professional corps of educators and increase the student achievement." Both of those reference NJAC 6A, various parts of it, whether it's Section 10 or Section 9. I won't belabor those to you, but I can assure you that all of those do speak to professional development as well and the importance of it to our profession. But again, as I said, I recognize that we are in difficult budgetary times. The board has made the decision to cut off nonessential PD for our members, and it includes the administration as well. It is not just our members. But I did need to look at how much of that is actually going out. So, I did pull the attachments for the past, uh, current school year, rather, from September till now, and roughly, there's a total of less than $40,000 that's being spent on professional development, which is a substantial amount, but not in the light of a school budget. Um, and I looked at the numbers of where this is going. We have 19 individuals who've made 58 claims that are non-affiliated members. And then we have 80 individuals who have made 103 claims that are affiliated. The interesting part, though, is that that money is almost equally split between the two groups. So, our members are not being enabled to take the professional development. They need not only to serve these kids, but to meet the threshold set by the standards of New Jersey and the laws of New Jersey with the evaluation regulations and their own recommendations for professional development, yet every single one of our members who takes a professional development is doing it at $126.95 less than the other people that are on there. And we are not being, being given the opportunity to do what we need to do for our students. So, while I know that this is not a question-and-answer session, I do want to pose that question to the board and ask them to seriously reconsider the freezing of professional development funds. I'm good. Thank you.
If I could just address some of Henry's questions and concerns. PD hasn't been frozen. It, it is being scrutinized, um, at a much higher level now. You are correct that we do have, um, issues with our budget. We want to make sure that we slow down all nondis, all discretionary spending in the district. We also will continue to provide many hours during our professional development days, as well as opportunities for teachers to take teacher, teaching teacher courses that we have offered in years past. That has been, um, that will continue.
Okay. Um, next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Cameron. I'm actually speaking on behalf of a colleague this evening, so I'd like to read a letter that was emailed to all of you earlier today. "Good evening. I had every intention of attending the meeting tonight and standing with my colleagues. Unfortunately, this was my first day back to school after struggling with pneumonia. My energy for the day has been depleted, and I do not want to have my students have another substitute if I relapse. I have addressed the board before today. I was a resident of Hillsborough from 1996 to 2005, and I have taught here at Otten Road Intermediate School for 17 years. There have been many, many positive changes along those 17 years. However, tonight, I wanted to address the change that impacts all of the staff, the basic infrastructure to the high-achieving district that we are. Health insurance is by far an issue for the entire country. It is not a well-run business by any means. Its costs are astronomical, to say the very least, and there is no real relief in sight, unfortunately. We, your staff, understand that the cost of health insurance is high and remains one of the top items to affect the budget each year. We, your staff, understand that you, as a board, want to streamline costs as much as possible to continue to grow our high-achieving district. However, we, as a staff, do not understand why it has to be at the cost of the very infrastructure that makes our high-achieving district. I am the very face of what invisible chronic illness looks like. I stand for my own rare immune deficiency and a plethora of other autoimmune issues, for anyone with diabetes, for anyone with rheumatoid arthritis, for anyone with chronic heart issues, for anyone with any chronic medical condition, who needs to prove all over again to each new insurance company the board switches to, that we need to continue the current course of treatment decided upon by our specialist doctors. Young and old alike, your staff and their families rely heavily on the health insurance coverage provided as part of our compensation package, as part of our incentive to continue to work for the district we are all so very passionate about. Aetna is notorious for denying first. Anything out of the ordinary is routinely denied. Things like acupuncture for pain management are deemed as experimental and denied. Because of this, we, the insurance holder, spend countless hours tracking down who to even talk to at Aetna, sometimes on hold for more than an hour, being routed all throughout their system to still not have resolution to what has been our course of treatment prior to Aetna. Aetna has required repeat testing to continue treatment. Our doctors have fought for us. Repeat testing means days lost from school. Not having the treatment we need often results in days lost from school, and just to have the time to fight for what we need might result in days lost from school because we do not have the phone hours during the day to be on hold for so long." The district-
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. The district then has to pay for substitutes in our place. Ultimately, who loses in this battle? Our students, who need us in the classrooms as healthy as we can be. There has to be a point where the basic infrastructure of the school district needs to be attended to before we grow even bigger and better. I solemnly ask that the board stop trying to find the extra pockets of money that might momentarily occur from jumping from one insurance carrier to another year after year after year. The first year of the switch will always bring about savings to the district. After that, the savings are depleted and the costs of that insurance rise. It's the very game that the insurance companies play to get your business. Your staff needs your support and understanding that the cost savings that occur year after year by jumping from one insurance carrier to the next are drastically affecting our well-being, our family's well-being, and ultimately, our students' well-being. And the sad part of it is that we, your staff and infrastructure, understand the budget process is difficult. Finding money to pay for the operations of our district is difficult. Losing state aid at the whim of a state is difficult. But continually cutting from your staff, your infrastructure, is impacting the very product of that infrastructure: its students. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dedna Rodzky.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Kent, 229 New Center Road, private citizen. I'd like to talk about the referendum question that you have before, uh, for action later on in the, in the agenda. Uh, in the way that I read it, I have a number of questions, and I'd like to express some disappointments with it. Uh, in it, you're not separating kindergarten from non-kindergarten, full-day K versus there. And the, the, the decrease in, uh, funding, state funding, that you noted, is over six years and $5 million total. And yet, the, the referendum question is asking for, if you separate $3 million for full-day K, startup costs, $5 million beginning year one for every year thereon. So, while you see a, while you're forecasting a $5 million decrease in funding over six years, in that same six years, you're asking the, the local taxpayers of Hillsborough to pay, excuse me, $30 million to, to counter, to counterbalance that. Looking at the, uh, the budgets from past years, even with the 2% cap and the, um, and the, and the healthcare waiver, uh, each year, the, the budget increases or the tax levy increases about 3.8%. I'm assuming that if this referendum passes, that $8 million becomes the new base upon which you get 2% on top of that. So, for 2019-20, it's about a 12% increase in the, in the tax levy, and also about a, about a 9% increase in the budget. That's a very large increase for one year. Additionally, our local fair share, at least of what it was for 2017-18, was $92.9 million, which is very close to what the local tax levy was. If you're adding $8 million on top of that, that's gonna, that's gonna throw the local fair share off balance at, at the detriment of the local taxpayers. I know that gets recalculated every year, but such a large influx is gonna, it's gonna, um, move us in the opposite direction where the local taxpayers are paying more than their fair share, uh, in comparison to the state. So, those are a number of different areas that I, I wanted to make sure that, as you, as you contemplate to vote, um, to act on this, that you have that in mind. Uh, and then also that the, that the population, uh, the taxpayers and the private citizens of, of the district are also aware of that. Uh, I have here my tax bill. So, my house is, um, assessed at just under $500,000. Uh, my portion of my taxes that go towards the school tax is $8,000. So, that 12% increase means I'm gonna be paying $1,000 a year, every year, in perpetuity. Um, and that's, that's the, that's a magnitude, um, that you're gonna be asking from the taxpayers. Additionally, with that additional $8 million, when you look at a per-student cost, with there, there being about 7,000 students, it'll be a little bit more if you have full-day K. That's an additional $1,000 per student. Uh, we've prodded ourselves in the past for being below the state average. This'll move us above the state average. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I do want to address a couple of things. Uh, Tom, I do want to address a couple of things on, on a couple of your questions. The issue with the raising the 5 million, because the 3 is for the, the preschool, is not just because of the state aid reduction, it's also because of the depletion of our fund balance. We went from 2.8 million, now we're down to 8 million, 800,000, excuse me. So, almost a $2 million drop that has to be refreshed, refilled, get to a place where we're not depleting surpluses to that particular level. That's one. Healthcare costs are anticipated to increase over $2 million, just that alone. Now, we can take a healthcare waiver, that's correct. The problem is, is that the healthcare waiver is indexed to the school employee health benefits plan, the state plan. The state plan has one of the lowest increases this year coming up. So, you can't waive that back to, um, to increase taxes in order to accommodate for, for that cost increases. Those two things, the fund balance, the healthcare waiver, that we're, we're, we're losing over $1 million on that, as well as the state aid decrease, and the, and the, the need to try to resolve the problem once, because in future years will be reduced, you're right, it's gonna be phased out over six years. But next year, it's gonna be a million, or the year after, next year, it's gonna be $1 million, and then it's gonna be $1,300,000, and then it's gonna be about $1,200,000. Every single year, we're either gonna have to go out to the taxpayers and ask for a levy adjustment above the 2%, or we're going to need to cut $1 million worth of staff programs and other things. I spoke, maybe the first year that I was here during budget development process, which you were a part of, and I shared with the community and with the board that we were on an unsustainable path, that we can't continue to do what we're doing. We've delayed it as long as we can, but then on the, almost the same year that we depleted surpluses, we got whacked with a $5.3 million reduction in state aid. And that's the reason for, for those changes. But I, I also want to share something that, um, that this is actually the estimated tax rate impact. I made the announcement, um, at a prior board meeting, that the, um, that the increase was, on average, $25 more for the average homeowner. And there it is, right, right there. Now, your home assessed at half a million dollars would be an increase of about $32 for the month, or, or, um, or $383. It's not $1,000, as you, as you anticipated. So, this is the calculation, and anyone can find out what their tax rate is going to be by multiplying the estimated tax rate, which is 1.684, times $100 of assessed property value, and you'll see how much, how much that's, um, that would be in terms of your prior year.
Just to, just to clarify how I came up with that number, I assume that if you just raise the tax, every, everything else being the same, house value assessments are the same, that when it, if you're increasing it 12%, then each individual's, everything else being equal, will also increase by that same amount. So, that's where, that's where I got my, that's where I got my, my value for that. So, okay. Thanks.
The business office did the calculation. These are going to be the increases moving forward.
Amy?
Hi, Amy Salinger, HEA treasurer. Um, I just wanted to do a clarification and follow-up on what Henry had said about the PD, and whether or not a uniform policy update had been sent to staff, because it's my understanding there has been email communication stating that there is a moratorium on all non-mandatory out-of-district PD due to budget being frozen. And that's a quote from the email. So, while I would agree that our required five days will still be fulfilled, and that's part of our contract, um, my understanding is this would mean no extra PD, no out-of-district PD, nothing like that is getting approved due to, um, the budget being frozen. So, I just wanted to clarify-
Let me clarify, because there was a miscommunication that went down. It wasn't that we were stopping everything, but we are slowing things down. And I want to make that very clear. And it's not just PD, it's all discretionary spending. So, we're gonna scrutinize it, it's gonna go through Dr. Intunis's office. In fact, on tonight's agenda, we have things that are gonna be approved that are not mandatory. So, we're, we're still making judgments and making decisions, and people can certainly apply. But I don't want to make the expectation that it's going to be like it was before. It's not. We are going to scrutinize.
All right, I appreciate the clarification, because I believe many people are under the impression that don't even apply because nothing's getting approved.
Well, we'll make that clarification to the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Is there any public input on the budget? Okay, moving right along.
May I, may I make a comment, Judy? Um, is now a good time for us to talk about the referendum wording-
Let's, let's talk about it when we get to the operations section. Okay. Uh, do you guys need a minute to vacate? Thank you all for coming. Right into the education agenda. Superintendent, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, to approve the submittal of amendments to the 2017-2018 carryover for IDEA and ESEA, approve a field trip destination, accept a target field trip grant, and approve the submittal of the ACS Hatch High School Chemistry Grant application, and approve the overnight trip as listed.
Okay. May I have a motion and second for items 13.1 through 13.6 of the education agenda? So moved. Thank you, Lorraine. Second. Chris, thank you. Any questions or comments about the education agenda? Moving right along. Roll call.
Shirley. Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge-Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mrs. Trahio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources to approv, to approve retirements and resignations. First of all, to approve the resignation of Mary Ann Zagary, school nurse from Amsterdam, who has been with us since 1994. We thank her for her many years of dedicated service to the school nursing program at ARIS. Also, to accept the resignations, to revise the acting principal appointment, revise leaves of absences, revise long-term substitutes, revise co-curricular stipends, revise mentor assignments, and approve the transfer of change in assignment as listed, and approve the leaves of absences as listed, and approve the appointments of a school psychologist, lunch aide, bus driver, and three co-curricular advisors, as well as substitutes as attached. Also, to approve- Also approve the mentors listed, the SAT internship, approve extra period coverage, approve the preapproval of extra period coverage as well as extra period coverage, and sixth and seventh period coverage, and approve the group changes as attached.
Okay, we're all getting sick here. I would like a motion and second for the human resources agenda, items 14.1 through 14.16.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Second. Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions or comments on the HR agenda? I would just like to add my comments about Mary Ann Zagary, our Amsterdam school nurse. I will miss her horribly. She basically started when my child was in kindergarten, and I go in every year to see her when I go read across America at the Amsterdam school. She was a wonderful influence on him and on every kid in that school, and we will miss her terribly. So, regards, Mary Ann. Anyway, any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge-Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve the resolution for a referendum on March 12th, as well as to accept the donation from the Central Jersey Nurseries of assorted hardware and fasteners. And we appreciate their generous gift to the board.
I would like a motion and second for the operations agenda, items 15.1 and 15.2.
Can we separate those two?
What's that?
We should probably separate them.
Okay, I'll take a motion and second for item 15.1.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So I actually prepared a statement or a few comments so that I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say, so if you'll indulge me, the privilege of reading it. So in my opinion, this referendum plan and wording risks the jobs of Hillsborough teachers and staff. It is not engineered correctly and relies on assumptions that are not a guarantee and not in the best interest of all of Hillsborough's children. The referendum is two parts, $3 million for full-day kindergarten and $5 million for lost in state aid, fund balance, and increases in the cost of running the district. To address the first part, I wanted to clarify, I'm not against full-day kindergarten. I just think there are higher priorities right now, such as meeting payroll for our current staff. And I'm not willing to gamble the loss of the jobs of our current staff by asking this referendum as one question. Second, still the first part, but second point, is full-day kindergarten is not mandated by the state. That means after year one, future boards can defund it. Point three, full-day kindergarten does not require a referendum to implement. The board could decide it as a priority and allocate money in its current budget. I've followed this board on and off since the $5 million state aid cut in 2010, and I don't remember full-day kindergarten ever being discussed during the budget development process. That's really where this discussion belongs. Fourth, still referring to the first part, the reason for the why now full-day kindergarten was, the statement was that implementing full-day kindergarten positively impacts state aid. That statement is true, but misleading. State aid will be reduced by $5.6 million over six years, but we have to pay $3 million for full-day kindergarten from year one. To break even takes between nine to 13 years or more, does not pay for itself. And the nine to 13 was, we can discuss that indeed, but anyway, the point is it does not pay for itself. The fifth point is that the plan for implementing full-day kindergarten in September 2019 relies on leasing trailers, modular classrooms of the sort, and permanent space requires passing a referendum for a new high school, and that's a huge assumption. And sixth, how much will full-day kindergarten actually cost? In a year of budget uncertainty, why are we adding another variable? So I can't know what might go wrong, but one thing I do know is if something sounds too good to be true, it probably is. Such as increased state aid to offset full-day kindergarten costs, especially when state senate president Sweeney has said the state has no additional money to give school districts, and the state's plan for correcting the underfunded versus overfunded district problem is to take money from so-called overfunded districts like Hillsborough and give the money to underfunded districts like whoever got money in the spring of 2018. To address the second part, the actual dollar amount needs to be, I believe, needs to be based on the 2019-20 budget development process where the board discusses its priorities for the district. We should not be asking for $5 million from estimated increases and lumping it into one big referendum that risks jobs that the community does not support this ask. The board needs to recognize there are members of the community who just cannot afford more. We need to give them a chance to say yes, that I will support our children's education, but please meet me halfway. My proposal is to split the referendum into two questions, with full-day kindergarten implemented only if Part 1 passes, which is, okay, and actually, and also, I think we should only be asking for the money the state told us it is taking away, and a portion of the fund balance increase in cost, sorry, slash increase in cost for a total of $3 million plus $3 million totaling $6 million and not $8 million. In the budget development process, we need to have a conversation about our community's priorities. My priorities are to continue to improve educational quality, show our teachers and staff that we appreciate them, and also, like in our personal homes, we need to allocate money for infrastructure maintenance. Those are my top three priorities. I believe we need to start the budget process at $0 and work our way up. It shouldn't be last year was X dollars, so this year should be X plus 2%. It should be, is this area still a priority for the board, and if so, how do we allocate money relative to other priorities? Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Are there any other comments? Yes, Chris?
I have voiced my opinion a number of times, but I'll restate it since we're voting tonight. I believe that, independent of the finances, a full-day kindergarten is a very worthwhile program. Obviously, it has a cost, but I think we need to bear in mind that this is something that came out of our strategic planning. I understand from Mr. Trillo's points that we did not, have not seen this in historic budget discussions, but this came up new in the strategic planning. It has been on this board's virtual agenda, if you will, since we took that advice from the community about the strategic plan. So I think that it's appropriate to consider it at this time. Given that I value that program and that the community has expressed an interest in having it, and the cost that is associated with it, I don't see how we could address those needs without doing some form of extra funding. While I understand that it does not pay for itself immediately, in the long term, it will, according to the numbers that we have available to us, and to me, that makes it worthwhile to do that. Regarding all the other numbers, we really don't have much of a choice, I don't believe. We've looked at our budgets, we've looked at what's going on and what has gone on in the 16 years since I was first on this board. We have struggled continuously to find a way to deliver quality programs and meet increasing costs without being onerous on the budget. And as Dr. Schiff pointed out, we knew, we've known for many years that there would come a point in time where there was no way around that. And unfortunately, I feel, and I think it's drawn by the numbers, we've reached that point in time. There's no way around that. We need more money just to get back to where we should be. That doesn't get, you know, those other numbers don't get us really much in terms of improvement. You know, putting $2 million back in the funds, reserve funds, isn't helping us, it's just getting us back to where we're supposed to be. We can't afford not to take care of those issues now. I understand this is not an easy thing for the public to accept, and certainly will have a financial impact on them, and that's why we let them vote on it. But I believe it's important that we present to the public exactly how dire the straits are from a financial perspective, so that they understand why we're asking and what we're asking for, and what has put us in this position. There is not a single issue, is a collection of issues, but at the end of the day, we're at a point where we need to go above and beyond that 2% cap because we don't have any other options in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Joyce?
Yes. I'd like to make a comment, and I did also prepare something, because I've been thinking about this for a while, ever since I heard about the referendum. I would like to add that I've had the experience of teaching half-day kindergarten. Then during the course of my career, I was appointed principal and had firsthand experience supervising full-day kindergarten classes. Half-day kindergarten is approximately two and a half hours a day, and full-day kindergarten is approximately six hours a day. I found that those students who attended full-day kindergarten received greater benefits in so many ways. One, students receive more individual attention each day from the teacher, which allowed for the students to have more practice in their subject areas every day. Students who were fortunate to have had additional academic exposures flourished, and those students with special needs or were in need of that extra support developed confidence and/or were identified early, so that by the time the students reached first grade, they were already identified and provided with extra help or special support. Full-day kindergarten students have the opportunity to engage in art and music classes with specials unlike the students who attended half-day. Socialization and confidence was most evident in a vast majority of the students. Most of all, I found that full-day kindergartners, having the opportunity to engage in rituals and routines, engage in academics doing group or circle time and in centers daily, had more time to practice and were more motivated emotionally and socially. My commitment to equality in education for our children is unwavering. I don't have children in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. I'm also retired. I also know that finances matter. However, this is such a worthwhile investment for our community's future.
Thank you very much, Joyce. Are there any other comments? Any other comments? Or can we move to, oh, Ann?
I would just like to say, having been a first-grade teacher in the district, it doesn't take long for one to notice the children who have been to full-day kindergarten and those who have had half-day sessions. It takes a lot of effort and time for children to just be socially and emotionally stable in a full-day classroom. And I think that, as a first-grade teacher, we talked of hoping that the district would adopt a full-day kindergarten many, many years ago, because I've been retired for, well, too many years. But at this point, I'm also retired, I have no children or grandchildren in the district, but I would be willing to pay the 25 or 29 or whatever amount of dollars per month it is to see the school district bring that up to a standard that helps start the educational foundation of these children, all in an equal amount for the kindergartens.
Thank you very much, Ann. Any further comments? Lorraine?
I just wanted to clarify, one of Gene's comments, that she said that it might take nine to 13 years for the funding, although I absolutely agree with everybody that it's, this is not an issue of funding, it's an issue of providing the best education we can. The nine-year mark was based on the amount of state aid, given that if the state aid was still figured the way it was figured last year, paying back exceeding the amount that we would cumulatively spend over that nine years. We don't ask that of any educational program. But in terms of just that state aid number exceeding the cost of the $3 million, that would be in year three. So, and that is even with trailers still being there, it's not impacted at all by whether or not a high school referendum passes. So, I mean, you know, so while educationally it is important, and the best thing that we could do for our youngsters in this town, financially, because the two are not separate, and people will ask, why are we spending money on a new program when we are in dire straits and asking them to fund these other increases? It does make financial sense in the long term. And so I think that people do need to know that, even though, as a board, we are tasked with both prudent fiscal management and ensuring the best programming that we possibly can for the funds that we can afford to spend. I myself think that it's worth the cost regardless of payback from the state, but there is a very important piece here, which is that the difference between a half-day and a full-day is actually exceeded by the difference in state aid that we would get, given the status quo in state funding formula. So, which of course can change at any time, and as we all know. So, but I do want to say that, because I don't want people thinking that we haven't considered, that we haven't considered these two things. We have considered them separately. Educationally, it's important, and I think, as I like to say, you go through all of this labor to have a baby, right? You don't want to go through the labor if there's no good positive thing on the outside, on the flip side. So I think this is something we could say to the taxpayer, yes, we need to increase to maintain our programs, but in the end, you're going to get this wonderful program that regardless of whether or not you have a child in the district who will take advantage of that program, the whole district will benefit. And your property values will hopefully remain the same, or people will choose to move to Hillsborough over some of our neighboring districts who do not have full-day K. And I do think it's important to say that we are only 1 of 10% that does not offer a full-day K program now. It's putting an excessive burden on first-grade teachers, I think, to try to get those standards, to meet the standards, the educational and curricular standards. So I'm very supportive of the referendum and supportive of paying the extra money in my tax bill to support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just like to very quickly say a few things, because I've talked about this for months. I think it's very important that we consider finances in this town. However, I think we really need to look at the educational value. We just discussed our code of ethics with this statement about sticking up for the educational welfare of all children, and we have a playing field that needs to be level. And we need to give all of our kids a good start and make sure that they're prepared for future grades. And frankly, we've been somewhat deficient in long-range planning for a long time as a board, and we're now at a critical point. And what I'd like to see is a situation, I mean, we're below average in the cost per pupil. If we were the average cost per pupil, our budget would have exactly $5 million more in the budget. We're also below the state average for equalized taxation, which might come as a surprise to people, but, you know, quite honestly, that's a statistic. Now, we have to come to the community and ask for help to be able to continue our current programs, maintain class size, move ahead with a big idea that we've been talking about for many years and that have been implemented by 90% of school districts throughout our state. And the fact that it will add to our ability to get more state funding, to balance some of the reductions, I think that's terrific. But it's not why I would vote for this. Our strategic plan cannot be stagnation. I lived through 2010 on this board. It was the worst year of my life. We saw somewhere between 60 and 70 staff members leave us the hard way. It was the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I don't want to do that again. And we also can't constantly be dealing with crises. We need to support the referendum, we need to move forward with our district, we need to do the right thing for our kids. And, you know, quite honestly, I'm in the same tax category as Tom. You know, I pay $8,000 or so in school taxes every year. I am happy to do it. I had one kid in the school system, I had two stepsons in the school system. They are all extremely successful today. I give our school system and our teachers in the back of the room and our administration a lot of credit for that. And honestly, you know, school, $8,000 a year, medical school, $75,000 a year, college, $75,000 a year. Okay, we've got an incredible bargain going on here. And I'm, like I said, my kids are all moved on and happy to pay for the next generation, because the next generation will be... because the next generation will be producing the doctors and the scientists and the artists and the workers of all kinds and the teachers. We have many people who go into education, yay, from our school district, and those people will be supporting our future kids. So I am fully in support of the referendum. And at this point, if there are no further comments, I'd like to move ahead with the roll call.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
This is 15.1, just to clarify?
Yeah.
No.
And Mrs. Haas?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, board. Okay, item 15.2, a donation. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you. That's an easy one.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Shirley. Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Informational items are attached for the board's consideration, and now it's time for second public commentary, Madam President.
Okay. Any other public comment, or is everybody worn out? Okay, step right up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Conklin. I live at Three Aldrin Court. I have a child in Hillsborough Middle School, and we've lived here since he was a baby. I'd just like to speak out in support of the referendum for full-day kindergarten. I believe that, like many other parents, I moved here because Hillsborough has a reputation for a fine school system. I myself grew up in New York where we have a full-day kindergarten, and I was very surprised to find that Hillsborough does not have a full-day kindergarten. I thought that was the standard of all, you know, places with a good educational system. Therefore, because I do value kindergarten, I paid for private kindergarten, which is very expensive. You know, you can find some very good educational opportunities at Hillsborough, but to pay out of pocket is expensive. So in that way, by having full-day kindergarten, it will actually save some families money who would otherwise pay out of pocket for kindergarten. Also, my experience, my background is in child welfare. I believe that overall, this will certainly benefit all young children that participate in the full-day kindergarten program. Also, as far as the state's assessment that Hillsborough is overfunded, I disagree with this strongly. I believe that assessments of this nature are often done based on, Hillsborough, for example, is, has been fiscally responsible. So the state may be taking an attitude of, well, they've gotten along without all of this money, therefore, they don't need it. So it's as if Hillsborough is being punished for their fiscal responsibility in this way. So I just wanted to make those points, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further comment from the public? If not, our board needs to go into executive session at this time. And I'll read the statement. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentially, confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey, as follows. One, the matter to be discussed is covered by attorney-client privilege. Are you seriously doing that to me? Love you. And the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public, and the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So we're going to go into closed session. We're not going to come out afterwards?
Well, it'll be about a half an hour, 40 minutes. No action will be taken.
No action will be taken, so we can adjourn this meeting, the public meeting?
We come back out.
Okay. We'll come back out just, we'll come back out just to adjourn. If nobody's here. So thank you very much for your attendance.
We'll take a motion.
Oh, sorry. It's late. I'm tired. Motion and second. We got it. All in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hey, I know, big night, but we'll make them shorter in the future. So, thank you very much. Thank you to the public. Thank you, Kaz, for your wonderful service always. And we'll see you next time, next board meeting, January 28.
Do you want to do a board picture?
Okay.